Okay, everybody, we're gonna bring this county commissioner meeting to order. Welcome to the March 23rd, 2023 Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County meeting. At this time, Commissioner Murphy will say the prayer and the pledge.
May he has peace. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just want to thank you, thank you for this day. Lord, thank you again for this wonderful weather that we're having here. And Lord, most of all, we just ask that you look over us here, commissioners in this community, to try and to take time to make the best decisions that's going to best affect each and every constituent in person in Columbia County here, now, and in the future. And Lord, most of all, we just want to ask you again to look out for our first responders and our troops that serve abroad. They give us a privilege and opportunity to be able to come here in free space, be able to speak what's on our minds, comes off our tongues. But we just ask for these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's lead against the flag of the United States of America, a true republic from which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as small.
Staff, is there any additions or deletions?
I'd like just to move one item, item number four, Resolution Number 2023 R14. I would like to move it up under Mr. Foreman.
Move it up under Mr. Foreman. Okay. So Joel, don't let me forget when you're up to...
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Message, if motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna read a proclamation, number 2023 dash O3 for National Healthcare Decision Month or Day. And Mr. Matt Brandon with Community Hospice is here to receive it, so I'll present it to him once we read it. Okay, Columbia County Florida Proclamation, 2023 P dash O3, National Healthcare Decisions Day. Whereas National Healthcare Decisions Day is recognized across the country on April 16th, it is designed to inspire, educate, empower the public and providers about the importance of advanced care planning, to raise public awareness of the need to plan for healthcare decisions, especially those related to life care and medical decisions making when patients are unable to speak for themselves, and to encourage the specific use of advanced directive to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas, healthcare and community organizations across Florida state are assisting people to plan for future healthcare decisions in the event they are unable to make their own medical decisions, and to encourage the use of advanced directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas, a large percentage of Columbia County residents have not yet prepared for healthcare decisions in times of crises and or at end of life, had not had important conversations with their families, loved ones, and their healthcare providers, and documented those decisions. And whereas, it is likely that a significant reason for this large percentage is that there is both a lack of knowledge and considerable confusion in the public about advanced care planning and advanced directives. And whereas, one of the principal goals of National Healthcare Decisions Day is to encourage physicians and their care teams, medical groups, hospitals, and health systems, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continuing care retirement communities, hospices, and community organizations to participate in a statewide effort to provide clear and consistent information to the public about advanced care planning. And whereas, community hospice and palliative care of North Central Florida and other healthcare organizations and community groups have endorsed this event and are committed to educating the public about the importance of discussing healthcare choices and executing advanced directives. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic makes advanced care planning even more important with every age group being impacted in over 840,000 deaths and counting in the United States attributed to this virus. Whereas, as a result of the month of April 2023, being recognized as National Healthcare Decisions Month, and April 16th, 2023, as National Healthcare Decisions Day, more citizens will have conversations about their healthcare decisions. More citizens will execute advanced directives to make their wishes known, and fewer families and healthcare providers will have to struggle with making difficult healthcare decisions in the absence of guidance from the patient. Now, therefore, the authority vested in me by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, I do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Healthcare Decisions Month, with April 16th, 2023, as National Healthcare Decisions Day. To encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs in Columbia County, Florida. Duly proclaimed this 23rd day of March, AD 2023, Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, by Rocky D. Ford, Chairman.
Mr. Brandon, you can come up.
Mr. Brandon, move your dog.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
You want them, you want them, Brad.
Okay, Davis.
Okay, item number, for the next item, the presentation requiring board voter action. As the board remembers, last year, we hired a firm that was independent, did not sell insurance, to review our healthcare insurance policies and make recommendations. And then one of the things the board voted on last year was to have come back this year and possibly do a request for proposal for insurance, do an RFP basically for healthcare insurance as we go into the budget process. So as we started to go in the budget process, the first thing I wanted to find out is where do we stand currently on claims and issues and with our current provider? And so today, we have Tyson Johnson here from Gallagher to tell you where we're at and what's going on with our current provider, and then also we can discuss what the insurance committee recommended after he presented this information to the insurance company.
Thank you, David. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and review with you some of the information that we reviewed with the insurance committee last week. As David mentioned, we were contacted by his office to come early, early on in the budget process to kind of give somewhat of a precursor or a projection toward what the county might expect with its annual renewal, which is an October 1st renewal. That process, when you back up from there, is normally finalized somewhere in the month of May or June, sometime in that timeframe. So what we did, as you recall, last year, as David mentioned, you engaged a firm, Cyber and Associates, to do a kind of complete review of your healthcare program to determine, you know, how, you know, how is it running, how's it looking, how do you compare, is it competitive? And the consensus, you know, among the Cyber consultants group was that, yeah, you know, it had a very competitive program, and it was probably best to negotiate a renewal. Your renewal last year, as you remember, was a rate hold, so no rate increase, no plan changes, no benefit changes of any kind. And then the board also, at that time, voted to, looking forward to this time of the year, to, as David mentioned, to do an RFP for medical coverage. So your medical coverage currently is through Florida Blue. There are other options, obviously, in the marketplace. We've reviewed those options periodically through the years. I think the last time was 2021, when we had four fully insured proposals, four self-insured proposals, and two consortium proposals. Those were all evaluated, and the county elected at that point in time to remain with Florida Blue, as it was the best alternative. And then the following year was a rate hold, and so we're going into the renewal for 2023, and how do things look? So I don't, does this move the slide?
Yes.
Okay, just the okay button, the middle button?
The arrows.
Okay. That's fine, right here. I'll just move it in. There's three slides, no big deal.
There you go.
All right, so the, and I'm assuming you all have this in your packets as well, so if you can't see what's projected here, and I'm gonna put my eyeballs on so I can read it. But this is a paid claims monitoring report. This is a report that we look at every single month. We kind of evaluate what's going on with the claims within the group. You know, are there any outstanding claims that are concerning or troublesome? Are there, you know, are there any trends emerging that would give us reason to believe that, you know, things could be turning in a direction that wouldn't be favorable? And I'm happy to report to you that far from that, it's just the opposite. Your plan has performed incredibly well, not just last year, but all the way through the time period we're looking at here, February of 2023. So you may remember that far right column is a column called Medical Loss Ratio. Medical Loss Ratio is just a calculation, is claims as a percentage of premium paid in. Insurance companies look at this number to kind of, that's the starting point, if you will, for where they might project their premiums to go for the coming year. Anything 75% or under is considered really good. And you can see, you're running at about a 53.5% mark right now through February, which is incredible. It, you may, those of you who've been on the board a while especially, you may remember years where that number has been in the high 90s or even over 100%, where claims have exceeded premium. And that's just not the case right now. That being said, there are two things that impact your claims, utilization, and that would be the number of people who are kind of in the mix utilizing. And then specifically within those, that utilization, those that are incurring high-cost claims, that are having serious medical issues that require, you know, the health plan to pay out a lot toward hospitals, physicians, pharmacy, that type of thing. So the second page of that, if you want to page over, is a summary of those high-cost claims. And you can see, this is year, year, the top half is the current year, the bottom half is the prior year. So prior year, you had nine total claimants whose claims exceeded $50,000, totaling 800 and about 815,000 in paid claims just for those nine people. This 12-month period that we're in right now, the numbers dropped from nine to seven, but more importantly, the total high-cost claims numbers dropped from over 800,000 to about 542,000. So this is a good sign, obviously. It makes, makes a big difference in what the renewal would look like. But just as importantly, it makes a difference in what your pro-share projection looks like. So I'll go back and rehash that pro-share agreement. Last year, when Cyber did the review for you, they, they also discussed an agreement that you have with Florida Blue currently. It's called a pro-share or profit-sharing agreement, and it's essentially a way for fully insured groups like yourself to be rewarded in the event you're having good claims experience without having the risk of being self-insured and, and having the financial burden if you were self-insured in a bad claims year. So what pro-share does is it's essentially just a calculation, happens every two years. So we're in the second year of the, of the, of the pro-share agreement. It'll end September 30th of 2023. And about 90 days thereafter, there'll be a calculation done, and it will determine what, if any, refund the county would be due under that two-year pro-share agreement. Last, the last term, I think the pro-share agreement refund back to the county was about 119,000, give or take. This year, just through the first year, which ended September of last year, and you can move forward to the next slide, I'm sorry. So we don't have, like anything other than, and I just copied and pasted an email here that I have from the underwriter at Florida Blue, and specifically, what they're indicating is that the county is on track right now for a pro-share refund of about $244,000. That's through year one. If it continues to track like it's tracking right now, from now through the end of February, that number's going to go higher. On top of that, because the claims experience is so good, Florida Blue has indicated to us right now that they know that your renewal will be no worse than a rate hold, like absolutely no worse. So it would be zero again. We believe, because we, we get the same claims data they get and you get, and we actually work with our underwriting unit to determine what we believe claim, claims justify in terms of premium. And we believe, based on, you know, that, those numbers, that if we go ahead and maybe at the end of March, because you don't want to get too far in advance, but maybe at the end of March, if we go ahead and pull a renewal, we believe it's very likely we'll get something better than that. So that's really good news to report. But the downside of this is if the county elects to go to bid and go out and does an RFP, there's no guarantee that the pro-share money would be paid, because it's not payable until the end of the contract year. So the contract year ends in September. There's a settlement done. In about January, they, they let a 90-day period go by to let run out claims come through. They do the settlement, the financial accounting, and then they pay it out sometime about February. So if, but the, the pro-share agreement has specific language that says, if you go to bid, they aren't required to pay it. They may still choose to do it, but they aren't required to do it. So our concern is, is that if you follow through on that, you put at risk the possibility of getting back a significant refund from Florida Blue. And, you know, we know we have a guaranteed rate hold right now, probably going to get better. And I'd be able to report back on that probably in another 45 days or so. So we took this information to the committee to just ask the committee's thoughts and, you know, whether the committee wanted the board to potentially reconsider the decision that was made last year to go to bid, because you now have information available to you that you didn't have last year. So completely understanding where you were last year, you now have new information, and it might change your position on that. So that's what we're really here to do, not advocating one way or the other. Although my recommendation is, is that you take what's on the table with Florida Blue and, and get at least a rate hold, but probably better, and lock in that pro-show refund, because we know it's going to be coming. We'd hate to see the county lose that money.
David, this refund money that comes back, you know, occasionally, where does it go?
The board gets to decide where they want to put it. In previous years, you have done it to offset some of the family costs on some of your insurers. Lisa, I don't know if she's here, but she would have a better idea prior to that, where you spent it. But every year, it would go to the board, and the board would decide how you would like to spend that money.
I think the, this healthcare is, we all know it's, it's like playing Russian roulette. You never know what you're gonna get until you pull the trigger. And we can understand the reason for the recommendation to go to bid, to see if we was scared apple, forget apples, or when it came to prices. But I would hate to see the county lose this much money upfront by going to bid and be not guaranteed this money, you know, since speaking. But yet still, the healthcare is something that really put a drain on, on the county and plus at our employees that have to insure their family. So, you know, we're looking for the best option there is for the county. We'll repay our employee's insurance and employees that pay their family insurance.
Well, as you know, historically, when we've gone to bid, gone out to market, we've had responses from carriers, fully insured and self-insured, and those are always evaluated. And so what we have found is in mostly in, you know, rural areas like we're in, Florida Blue tends to be very competitive. Now, that doesn't mean that from year to year, somebody else doesn't jump in and get more competitive, but they tend to be very competitive year in, year out. So matter of fact, since 2010, the county's average rate increase, and they've been with Florida Blue that entire period of time, average rate increase has been 2.67% as of the end of last year. So that's been the average rate increase. Some years have been higher, some years have been, you know, there was a bunch of years there where it was flat, and it's rate, you know, rate holds. But the average has been 2.67%. So we believe, you know, if Florida Blue has, if there's nothing changed in the marketplace to make us believe that Florida Blue is gonna give us a different result than they've traditionally given us, it's kind of a safe choice, and we know we have money on the table with the pro-share, and I feel very confident we're gonna get a favorable renewal. So, but, you know, if, if the board elected to go to bid, you know, they would hold back on the renewal. They wouldn't provide us a renewal, and, because they would just respond to the RFP as that would be their renewal, you know, just their response. And then, and then the pro-share money may or may not, they don't have to pay it under the terms of the agreement.
The years I've been here, you know, we've been down this road a couple of times, and I concur what Mr. Williams said there. You know, this is pretty consistent plan. And one of the other things, coming upon budget seizing, this gives us one tool in our, we don't have to worry about this, you know. We know we're gonna have other increases, what have you, but we'll just get the ball started by this. But my opinion would definitely be, I'll wait for those board members to make camp, but I'm definitely supportive of it.
So Mr. Johnson, I understand you say, we're definitely not going up?
That's correct.
And maybe probably go, our rates will go down a little?
That's, that's my belief.
Okay.
So a 2.67%, that I didn't keep up with. I mean, you know, I mean, that inflate, you know what I'm saying? So to be under 3%, higher rate increases really is pretty impressive to me. I'm not an insurance man, but that's, everything's gone up.
You're a consumer, though.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's, everybody's gone up more than 2.67%, you know?
Yeah. And, you know, listen, this is, when you have good years, you celebrate them, because they aren't all good. We've had, you know, we've had some bad ones here, right?
Yeah.
And they're tough. But we have a really good one right now. We have a good two-year run, actually, going right now. And, you know, there's a lot of money on the table that would be at risk if you did something different, and I just want to make everybody aware of that.
Well, in all my years of dealing with insurance, I've never had a year of mine didn't go up. So I hate not to take advantage of this.
A whole lot more than 2.6%. Ask somebody about health insurance or roof insurance, you know, nowadays, so. Chair, I'd have no reservation in making a motion to continue on with Florida Blue and to not send out for an RFP upcoming year.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do each year, the, well, we'll say Florida Blue, that's what we use, negotiate a price on a co-pay. How is a co-pay established?
So...
On, on medication, on me?
On medications? So depending on what the medication is and which plan you have, it would determine, so co-pays are just flat dollar amounts that the employee pays for a medication. The cost of that medication usually far exceeds the cost of the co-pay. But certain plans require you, depending on which ones you have, certain plans require you to pay for all of the cost until you've met your deductible. And then, once you've met your deductible, you either pay a co-pay or, or percentage of the cost of the drug. So, but the underlying cost of the drug itself, I think that's the question you're really trying to get at here. And yeah, that's negotiated, it's, it's, it's really not annually or quarterly. It's almost like continuously with the, what are called pharmacy benefit managers. So Prime Therapeutics is the, is the manager for the pharmacy benefit for Florida Blue, Prime. And so Prime negotiates with all of the manufacturers, from generic all the way up to specialty drug-type manufacturers on the prices of those drugs, and then those are passed through to the health plan.
Do that co-pay check can change from year to year?
It can, if the cost of the drug changes.
Also, if, if I'm correct, if it's not a generic, sometimes they won't pay for it at all.
Um, most, I mean, your plans all cover both preferred and non-preferred brand-name drugs and specialty drugs. There are protocols in place for brand name and non-preferred brand name drugs, that if there's a generic equivalent, it requires you to take the generic equivalent. And if for some reason you can't take the generic equivalent, then a doctor can request an authorization for the brand name.
Sometimes the doctor has to request it, send letters, and it takes a little while.
And that's, that's a cost containment measure that the insurance company has, because what they're trying to do is avoid, you know, over-prescribing brand-name drugs that are more expensive when there are less expensive generic equivalents available that most people can easily take.
I, I answer that question. I'm sticker shy, I got sticker shy. My Geneva, after Florida Blue pays so much, I still have to pay $580 a month for every refill. For Cego, I'm paying $515 a month on co-pay.
Well, you should hit your out-of-pocket maximum really quick, and then it would be covered at 100% if you have the right plan.
You still paying that this year? Yeah.
It resets every January.
I'm paying a thousand dollars.
Every January, right?
I'm paying a thousand dollars a month for two trips.
Yeah, but you, you should have a maximum.
There'll be a maximum there where it starts being free.
Yeah.
There is. Every plan has a maximum out-of-pocket expense, so...
You need to look back.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'd be happy, Mr. Williams, to sit down with you and walk through that with you, and we'll, we'll see what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need some help.
I'll help you.
On up the red flag.
They kept you alive 80 years, ain't they?
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Y'all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First item for public hearing and consideration for adoption this evening is ordinance number 2023 dash zero four, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida prohibiting smoking and vaping in public parks within the unincorporated county, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. The court, excuse me, not the court. The board will recall that Ms. Frye has come and spoken to you a couple of times, going several months back, about a model ordinance that Tobacco-Free Florida is having adopted across the state. This is derived from that. The board authorized adoption hearing for this evening. It's been advertised, and it's now ready for public hearing.
Open up public hearing at this time. Is anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Brandon, I move we adopt orders number 2023 dash...
Hold on, Commissioner, wait. Did I, did I miss somebody?
I seen her.
That's Ms. Frye. I think she's just excited.
Okay.
I've seen all kinds of faces here.
Oh, I missed somebody. I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
I, I made a motion to adopt orders number 2023 dash zero four.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is, I'm sure you'll all agree, is a long time coming. This is adoption, consideration for adoption on public hearing ordinance number 20, excuse me, 2023 dash zero six. This is an ordinance of Columbia County, Florida, amending ordinance number 98 dash one, the Columbia County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the text of the Columbia County Land Development Regulations pursuant to application LDR 2301 by the Board of County Commissioners, providing for amending Article Five entitled subdivision regulations, providing separability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. The board has previously reviewed this ordinance a few times, I think. We've advertised it for hearing this evening, and it's now ready for public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time for, for ordinance number 2023 dash O6. Is anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Board, we're sure.
I make a motion, well, they aren't final yet. I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023 dash zero six.
Got a motion in a second. Before we, any further discussion, I would, Mr. Kirby, you've reviewed this, and you, you're, you concur with everything on this, all the changes, you're okay with it?
Yeah, yes, sir. Team of people, we all reviewed it antle, and I would like to basically recommend to this board that we review this on an annual basis.
Yes, yes.
Because we're getting started. It's kind of like, uh, starting any new business. We identified the issues we have on hand, and I'm sure we're gonna learn about new ones as we go through it.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could dovetail into that, recall that we've now implemented the, the county's subdivision construction design manual, and that will give you much more flexibility after you adopt this. So Mr. Kirby comes and tells us there's an issue with the way some of these preliminary plats are coming in, and people aren't accounting for things. We can bring that manual to you, and it's much faster than what this is.
Got you, got you.
Okay? Won't take 120 days like it did this time.
Any more discussion?
I'm fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The third item... Thank you, Mr. Chair. The third item I have for consideration for adoption of public hearing is ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance of Columbia County, Florida, amending ordinance number 98-1, the Columbia County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the text of the Columbia County Land Development Regulations pursuant to an application LDR 2302 by the Board of County Commissioners, providing for amending Section 4.2.39 entitled borrow pits and Section 14.7.1 entitled special permits for borrow pits, providing separability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Just like the last ordinance, gentlemen, this is the culmination of your requested changes to our language relating to borrow pits to make them more permissible in the county.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this?
Mary Lee.
Mary Lee.
I thought she didn't move.
Hello, Mary Lee Malwitz Gibson from Fort White, Florida, 460 Southwest Riverland Court. Are you making it easier to have borrow pits? Is that what I'm understanding?
I couldn't hear what she said.
You're making it easier for businesses or whatever, whoever makes a borrow pit to have a borrow pit?
Not making it easier, no. All we're doing is changing the setbacks a little. So, basically, you can dig more of your property as far as setback. That's always changing setbacks.
As a citizen in this county, I would have to object to that. I don't think digging up anything in the ground, especially around the Itchy-Tuckney that's going on, we're seeing that from the road, and it's really, it looks horrible, and it's very concerning as far as like what is, the, the borrow pits are touching the water, which means it's the surface of the aquifer. So, you're exposing the aquifer down there in the Fort White area, and that looks like a borrow pit. I don't know what that is. I guess it's sand mining. I'm not really sure what's going on between Fort White and the Itchy-Tuckney entrance on 27. But the, the, the pits that are dug into that space are horrendous. I don't think you'll ever be able to recover whatever's going on in there, and I'm really concerned that the rest of the county would have the same problems with borrow pitting, with digging up your land and then having your neighbors, especially the rural people, which is where I live, where these things develop. I, I would be opposed to this. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Board?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023-07.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt...
We got addition.
Joe's got one more.
It's okay. They pushed me in here, Commissioner.
Commit agenda for one moment.
Yeah, we've got one more.
Just for this thing here.
Resolution number 202314.
Yeah, and Commissioners, this won't require a public hearing, but I appreciate you allowing me to take it in turn. The resolution that's attached is basically directing our Codification Service MUNICODE to take a 2018 ordinance relating to campgrounds. The, in 2018, we had amended the definition of campground in the LDRs to include cabins in Section 2, Article 2, excuse me. And then that ordinance had what's called a general repealer clause that said anything in conflict is repealed. Well, the problem with that is when that goes to MUNICODE, they don't really know what that means, right? And so, Connie, being our new land development regulation administrator, did not know about the 2018 ordinance and had no way to know it because there was no change to Article 4, even though the 2018 ordinance clearly authorized the change to Article 4. So, what we're doing is taking that 2018 ordinance and directing MUNICODE what to change in Article 4 because they didn't change it already. So, this prevents us from having to go through a full LDR amendment, and it fixes the problem. I'm also happy to tell you that the memorandum I wrote that explains all this is being used as we speak in the planning and zoning meeting with respect to the two individual applicants who had their campground issue before then. So, the, we had a lot of discussion about it, and it was very well-founded discussion, and there was clear confusion that clearly needed to be resolved. You're resolving this right now.
Okay. Uh, any, any...
And we don't need a public hearing, so.
Okay. Board, Joe, y'all got any discussion on this, or you have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Okay, at this time, you can, you make a motion now.
To approve the consent agenda?
Got a motion and a second. Approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have three items for your consideration this evening. The first, as you are aware, we're mobilizing to do a dirt-to-pig conversion on Cypress Lake and Charles Road. The family of Siobhan Williams reached out to me, and they consider a tree that is on that road a memorial marker for Siobhan Williams. As you know, when we do dirt-to-pig conversions, we have to clear and remove trees. So, they said, can you leave the tree? We said, well, unfortunately, we can't because we're building a road. So, they're requesting us to place a memorial marker in lieu of the tree. So, I'm requesting a motion to approve a quest memorial marker in honor of Siobhan Williams to be placed on Cypress Lake's road.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item, a few years ago, we decided we were spending a lot of money outsourcing red light work, traffic operations work. We're fortunate enough to hire a very qualified individual, and he's building a team of men. Back in the capital project process last summer, you approved a traffic ops building, and you got three bids. Your low bid was cutting edge at 164, 75, 465, so I'm requesting a motion to approve bid and contract to Cutting Edge Development LLC in the amount of 16465.
Some moves, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. Somebody second it?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The follow-up item is going back to our sewer plant at the Anamota Park. This amendment eliminates the retainage clause. DEO recognizes the process undertaken by the county to get the treatment center of construction of NFIP. Contractor has mobilized with Gambor. We hope to be buttoned up by September of '24. Original grant agreement included a 5% retainage clause. Should it not be completed June of '23. So, they're working with us. So, I'm requesting a motion to approve amendment number three for DEO agreement number G0045 to eliminate the retainage issue.
Some move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. David? Okay, we're on number five, board.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, this is number five. Position descriptions, descriptions and pay grades. So, basically, we had a retirement at the library. The person that retired obviously was a very senior, long-tenured person, which meant they also had a very relatively high salary. Katrina would like to take the savings from that salary by hiring somebody in at a lower grade and upgrade the branch manager one, branch manager two, and branch manager three positions from 117 to 122, 119 to 125, 127 to 130. She also put in job descriptions to show you a more detailed analysis of what's, what those positions do. So, the retire, the money saved in the retirement will fund the changes to these job positions. So, there'll be actually, actually a little bit of a net savings to the county. So, we're requesting approval of the revised job descriptions.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to respond to a couple of things. Myself and David had a couple of conversations about this yesterday. To start off with, there's not a doubt in my mind, these, as, if you read the backup material, there's, these people got a lot of responsibility, being the other branch managers, as it was stated in the proposal. But this is due to an individual that's been with the system for quite some time that retired, and I've just got a, when you, when you put it that way, what if Kevin has three people retire this year, and that's high at the top of their pay grade? Is Kevin coming back to us for this? In my opinion, this is a, this is a budget discussion item here because this is how you build, not that I'm out to build the revenues any larger as far as the reserves or what have you, but, you know, they're going to hire, replace this individual, whoever he or she may be. They're going to start him out at the minimum pay grade, you know, so that builds budgets into this. And as me and David were discussing this, getting to the meat of it, to my knowledge, we haven't reached out to even see where these pay grades compare to other library situations in North Florida. And thirdly, we just give $3 an hour to every employee in the community, and, and I've got to answer to the people that come in my little old shop, and, you know, dang, I like to get two or three raises a year, you know? So, I, I, I would ask, if it, if it calls for it, I would simply make a motion or recommendation that we just postpone this to budget time and give the library director an opportunity to come up and, and work it into the budget process. I, I just, I, I think we're opening up a, and I know we've done some things like this due to, if I, I go back to the point of where Kevin was really, really struggling trying to get an application to come in the door, we've made some adjustments to these. But at this point in time, I don't even know if we're comparable to other communities. And, and I've done my research, and, and me and David had a good conversation about this too. There's a lot of people in the community who use our libraries, and I want to do everything we can to fund them, but I just don't, at this point in time, I, I can't support making the adjustment in midterm while we're fixing to step into budget negotiations. And I think that would be a good time to openly discuss this as everybody comes to us asking for differences to their budgets. So, I think that'd be an appropriate time to do that. So, with that being said, I would, I would, we do, I, I just make the motion to table this until budget time.
David, have you, have you, have you looked at other counties? Have we compared their pay or anything like that?
We have not recently. So, in previous years, when we were facing raising everybody's salary to get to the $15 an hour raise, we looked at salaries back then, but with this particular process, we have not.
Board?
Hold on a minute. I, I kind of agree. You, you already gave these people $3 an hour raise, and they want a raise in, in the middle of the stream here. And if we're going to give them more money, I think it is a budget item. Should be carried out during the budget. So, that's my opinion about it.
David, what brought this on at this time to do this?
Katrina made the request because we had the retirement, and she looked back at her people that she was going to have to promote, you know, into the branch manager one, into the branch manager two, into the branch manager three, looked at their job descriptions and just felt she needed to adjust this out.
I'm kind of like Commissioner Murphy. I'd like to see some, of information, you know, justifying that we're, we're not, we're not competing with other, other counties and stuff for this position.
Okay.
Uh, and if we can get that, I mean, we might put it back on, you know, if we, if it's justified, I'd like to see documentation that it's justified.
Okay.
And, uh, oh, otherwise, we can dress it during budget.
I, I, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. If, if, if the person had not retired, we wouldn't be discussing this.
Yeah.
We're going to dress it during the budget time.
Yeah, so, I have a second. Mr. Murphy?
Second. Chair, if I may, let me reword my budget, uh, I'm sorry, reword my motion. I'd like to make the motion to table this until budget, budget negotiating times, I guess. That was a recommendation by my attorney.
Okay.
That's it. Perfect, perfect.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I have a second. I just want to say, I am a huge opponent of staying with our budget. If we don't stay with our budget, we, we're, we tell our people all the time, you know, hey, you, you want 20 more thousand dollars? It's in the middle of, you know, the year. It's not budget time. So, I think we got to stick to that as much as we can, and, and I agree that this is something that should be a budget issue. Second.
So, we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The next item is bid number 2022, 2023 C Opera Groups Four and Five. This is a continuation of the emergency housing repair program. We have the new group of people that were approved. There were four pre-qualified contractors. The lowest bidder on six of the homes was Patriot Response Group. Lowest bidder on the other four homes was A2B Development Corp. LLC. And so, we'd like to recommend to award all six of the projects in Groups Four and Five to Patriot Response Group where they were low bid, and the other four projects to A2B Development LLC.
All right, motion with a question.
I made a motion.
Yeah, you did, you, you made a motion to approve it, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I give one question, that's a second.
Okay.
I'll say, I'll say with a question. Yes, sir.
And I have some discussion to...
Neither one of these contractors are the bad contractor, right?
Correct.
Okay. Or, or not?
They are not.
Okay.
And have you checked to make sure these, these contractors can, can proceed with this many jobs at one time?
Yes, they're pre-qualified.
Okay, so they can handle six jobs?
Yes.
Who is, who in the county is the liaison in between the contractor and us?
So, we have two different liaisons. Obviously, Mike and now Eric, Eric in purchasing are working with our consultant from Guardian, which is Antonio, and Antonio is the one that works for us, working with the contractors.
So, is Mike taking complaints from the little lady that come up here the other day, or is, or you?
We take them, and then we give them to Antonio to investigate.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I just, I just want to keep that ball rolling because, you know, bless her heart, she was really struggling the other day. All she was doing was just trying to get her roof fixed, you know? So, I just want to look out for them people.
And people have given us a very positive response on Antonio's work.
Okay.
Okay.
David, one of the things that I would like for you to do, and I know that we can go into the office and ask you, but sort of kind of, every so often kind of bringing up a date on how the project's going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up at the next board meeting.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The next item is what we talked about in the workshop just before this meeting. We have an economic development agreement with Project Beehive. They would like to locate in the North Florida Mega Investral Park and put in, well, we talked about it at the workshop, so that's all I'll say is we are asking your approval of the economic development agreement with Project Beehive.
I make a motion. Go ahead. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think we pretty much beat that horse.
We got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And then the final thing I have for the evening is Richardson Community Center deed. So, based on the direction provided by the Board of County Commissioners, our current plans are we are going to operate the center till March 31st, at which time we will stop operating the center. Then we'll proceed to inventory any assets that we're not going to take with us, create a list of surplus property, and then ask you to donate that property to the city. Things like it didn't make sense to pull the stove out, pull the refrigerator out, you know? So, we're going to ask you to surplus these things and donate them to the city, for the city to take over. In the meantime, the city has sent us signed and executed deed for the Richardson Community Center. If the board chooses to accept the deed, then of course we proceed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we accept the deed from the city legislative for the Richardson Community Center and its properties.
Okay, I, I, I'll offer a second of that, but, but I have one contingency. The city has just as much responsibility to the kids in that area. County is part of it, the city is part of it too. The only way I can support it is if we get the city to give us what we offered them, and that's $150,000 a year toward running it. They got out of recreation completely. I don't know how many millions they saved, but $150,000 to make sure these kids have something to do, stay out of trouble, just like all the kids around the county. The more they have to do, the more they stay out of trouble. But, but I do want to... But, but I do wanna say one other thing. It, it, I, I was all for doing what we did and, and, and the city wouldn't give us a deed, you gotta, you gotta call people's hand. And, and I'll tell you, some of the things I heard during that meeting about, well, you know, it, it's not the facilities that matters, it's the, it's the programs. Well, it does matter, the facilities. Ron Williams and his crew and, and Kevin Kirby for fifteen years have made those facilities the best in the, the best areas. And I believe the facilities do matter. So it scared me a little bit that a, that one of the councilman, council people said, you know, it's not the facilities, it's, it's the programs. It is not. It's the facilities too. You gotta have good facilities to provide good programs, in my opinion. So we, you know, we spent a lot of money. I don't know how much it was, Ron, but, but that place came down from, came from nothing to something. That's really nice. And I have people in my district that use it. Everybody here has people in our district use it. But I do not feel like it's just our responsibility to, to provide recreation for the children in that area and the children in all over the county. But, but since it's in the city also, they have a responsibility to help the children also, because it benefits them and, and their city and the people of their city. And that's my feeling and I will second that motion with that contingency. If, if you wanna amend your motion, you can, Ron. If not, that's fine.
Commissioner Williams, you want to come in?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is, if I'm, I wanna make sure everybody understands it. The motion on the floor right now is that we accept the, the deed for Richardson Community Center from the city on the basis that the city votes to provide a one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year toward that facility. Is that correct?
And those are the numbers that I've heard.
Yeah, I have heard that number too.
So it, it's not like.
Well, it's the same thing we offered the city.
We're not, it's, it's not.
Right, we're not, we're not asking.
This number's been out there by city council.
We haven't asked them anything more than they, than we would have done for them. And we offered it to them, so. But, but y'all know as well as I do, you see the things happening. These kids need something to do. They need something to do all around the county.
But the, the community center is not gonna be run like it was run before. Am I right or wrong or?
Yeah, David have separated the community center from recreation.
Okay.
Recreation stands on its own.
I agree with that.
Nothing like it was before.
Nothing like it was before. We don't need.
All that'll still be in place that I know of.
That recreation center should support itself like any other.
Yes.
Okay. So, so David, if I may, the, on the recreation side of things, prior to this all going down the road it did, correct me if I'm wrong, were we not supposed to have a collective workshop to determine which path of recreation in Columbia County we are going?
Absolutely. I believe we do need to have a workshop on that.
I mean, and, and beforehand, and that's where I don't wanna get the, I, I'll use the, Commissioner Williams, I don't wanna get the horse, uh, uh, as a cart here, but I, I'd like to really, really have a solid plan because we must, if we're gonna go down the road of recreation, there's several things we all gotta collectively take into place. Number one is the amount of money. It, it's gonna be a big chunk to do it right. But if we're even gonna get close to the operational procedures as way it was six months ago, I can't support this. Because, but, but I believe we're all men enough and, and, and with the support that we'll get from the community to sit down and build a rural, if we're gonna be in recreation, you can't be in it partway today and partway. It's gotta be recreation from the Georgia Line to the, to the, to the Lottway Catalina. It's gotta be solid all the way across the board. And when I say that, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying it's got to be consistent. And we can't be dealt with personal agendas uh, as far as, and I, and I'm not talking on this board side. I'm just, I, I just know what I know that's been spoken in the community. And because we've operated for years, uh, myself and Ms. Van, Clint, uh, we had a real, real good meeting with Clay County a couple of weeks ago, really opened my eyes to a lot of situations. When we blurred it out, uh, you can back, you can ask Clint next time you see him, that we support five oh one C threes, they like, them commissioners like fell outside their, their, they like flipped over. They said, are you crazy? And I've had them call me since then. But my, my point is that with the financial issues that we all know, Ron's been around here long enough, he's seen them come and go left and right. Uh, and uh, and I, I would think anybody that's done their studying, you will concur to words of that. There's got to be a real collective plan. David, what was it, a year and a half ago now, I asked you to go spend the day with Jason Fury over there and he educated you quite, and Jason Fury being the gentleman in Swanee County. But the, what we went through over there at Richardson Community Center, because I agree with Robin, I agree with Ron, you know, it's our job to try to provide a safe place, but uh, I, I don't wanna call it the after-school care thing, you know, because i- i- if we do that, we, we provide that type of environment throughout this community. We must, because you know, it, it, it's not fair to do one one way and one another way. I'm all for idle time for a child is, is bad time. That, that's all there is to it, but, but without a solid plan as to where, I, I don't want to get caught up in the political side of things and rush into this thing. Us taking that deed today and signing it is Columbia Counties, I, I don't see what the advantage is there without a solid plan. But I, I, but I concur and I understand exactly what Mr. Williams and Commissioner Hollisworth are saying. But I, I just think we really gotta do this thing and do it right because number one, you, you better go ahead and look for a million dollar impact to your, to your budget this coming year, because it's gonna take a bit of that. That's fact. That's fact.
Me, it's, I, I, it's funny, we touched on that. Me and David had the, uh, had a long conversation meeting today about, about recreation and the way we do recreation now. Um, and I, and I know y'all get the same calls I get. Every time somebody takes over Fort White Boys Baseball or uh, girls softball, first thing I hear is twenty thousand dollars went missing, thirty thousand dollars went missing.
All the time.
What they're not. So, you know, I, I kinda, I agree with Commissioner Murphy, something has to be done. But I think that we could keep uh, Richardson, basically what we're doing right now and, and keep it on that schedule till we can do this workshop and get us a plan in place of, which way?
Let's, let's face it, guys. These organizations not working like they did in old days.
No, it's true.
They, they are, they are just not working.
Exactly.
You know, get, get any volunteers out here, they're gonna run this program, they're gonna run that program. It ain't working. And, and, and I, 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 we'll save this for a workshop. You know, I'll save my thoughts for a workshop.
But it's something we have to do.
Something we need to do.
And, and.
But we have, we have, we have our Richardson funded in this year's budget. Uh, we have a separation between the Rec Department and, and, and the Good Community Center done. David have put in place how he wanna run it and it'll be good for the community.
And, and, and I just want to make sure everybody understands when we vote on this tonight, if it passes, it passes on the condition the city approves to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
And I wanna say something about that. I have seen people piling here about Richardson Community Center like you ain't never seen. I've been to the city meetings about it and not see anybody, maybe five or six people. I wanna urge the people that want Richardson Community Centers programs and everything to go like they've gone with the county and we've done a heck of a job. I don't think anybody's gone back out and anybody's gonna say a word about the way we've done our job out there. But if you don't show up at that city meeting and you don't talk for Richardson GM, I don't know what's gonna happen. And it's not my business to know, but I know this. We, people come in here rocking for uh, us to do something about recreation and, and Richardson Community Center. And I agree with these guys, we need to do, we need to do more. I know Rocky's working on some things down in Fort White. But, but if you don't, it's not in our hands anymore. It, it's in the, it's in the city's hands if we, you know, i- i- if, if they don't spend the money, it's, it's not gonna be good. So I think that the people that are concerned with Richardson and really care about it should be at their meeting, because if you're not, I think the schedule's how many days afterwards?
Well, um, I believe their first meeting is the first Monday of the month. And we're scheduled to give them the keys the first Thursday of the month.
So do you under, I want everybody to understand that, that, that the seriousness of this, so.
But you know, and I, of course, I know you made your motion and what have you, but I, I just not sure. We're letting them off easy at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's all there is to it. And I mean, uh, and don't get me wrong, I'm proud, I voted for every single improvement we've made to Richardson facility and every other facility there, because that sets the precedent is that I support that, but uh, you got animal control coming right around the corner. Guess what? They ain't gonna wanna pay their part there either. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a gift and as we all know, there ain't been one discussion on the floor of city council about any type of donation whatsoever. And that's why, you know, we've got the support of three councilmen that said, you know, give it to the, give the deed to the county, but we, we need that caveat, we need that comfort for them to come to the table and say, you know, okay, well, you know, we understand what you're saying. You know, bring the dollars, but y'all, y'all do as well as I do. Everybody sitting at this counter. There been a lot of stuff taught. When he gets over to that meeting, it changes real quick. So that's why I say, I'm just simply saying, if, if we're gonna accept the deed tonight, uh, I, without having all this done in black and white, I, I, I'm not against Richardson, but I won't support that, but, but I, I just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
We're not, we're not accepting of the deed tonight. We're saying if they don't do what we're asking them, we'll accept the deed.
My motion was to accept the deed.
But, but, but.
Under the condition that they pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, without the one fifty, we can't, you know, that's, that's, I believe that's motion, I guess we need to restate it, but.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna be clear, 'cause I don't think, I'm not putting word in Mr. Williams, but I, I think, I don't think that's the motion you made, correct, Ron?
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We need to understand the motion.
Oh, oh, okay, Commissioner Williams, the motion is, if I understand it right, that we will accept the deed to Richardson under the condition the city votes to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year towards the community center.
Which have been stated, which have been stated by city council.
No, no, no.
But they have, they have officially carried.
But they got to, for, yeah.
But we gotta have a vote for it, yeah. They gotta carry it for us to accept the deed in my.
You ain't got leave deed.
That's my second. If that's not my second, then I withdraw my second, but that's my second. If they don't accept the deed, the deal's off for me. I mean, except the hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, the deal's off.
Everybody clear on what the motion is?
If I could speak to the way this'll work. So with deeds, acceptance is presumed. You notice the, the person who gets the deed doesn't sign it, right?
Right.
With, at law, we assume that we like to receive things, so we get them. So the way I think we need to explain this to the city is unless there's a financial commitment of the nature made in the motion by a certain date, then we will disclaim the deed. Disclaiming means give it back. So right now, acceptance is presumed. What you're really saying is unless you can make us a promise by a certain date, then we're gonna give it back.
Commissioner Williams, you good with that?
Yes.
And we need a contract of that effect.
Well, we're gonna extend that as the condition. And so, Mr. Kraus, what was the scheduling on the meetings again?
They meet the first Monday of every month.
And we were moving out on the Thursday right after that?
Yes.
So we need it done at that Monday meeting.
Yeah.
I think what we'll do, if, if the motion passes, just to let the board know, Mr. Kraus and I will get together, we'll draft up a notice explaining y'all's decision, uh, and we'll hand deliver it to Mr. Uh,
Dial.
Dial tomorrow morning. We'll, we'll need to get it done pretty quick.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do, uh, three-minute comments now, open comments. I have a card for a Ms. Gopel Kroger or Mr. Gopel.
Mr.
Come on up, sir.
Roger.
Roger. Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen. This aggressive dog problem is entering into the sixth year. It began in two thousand and eighteen. And I have been writing after, letter after letter to the county, to the animal shelter people, to the owner of the mobile home, Makati Park. But nothing has been done. And last July, the dog always crosses all the four lane of ninety and come on the south side of ninety where I'm riding my bicycle to do, go to the town or coming back from the town. And all the time, there are dogs that chasing me and last summer, they jump on me and I fell down and injured my palm, my knee and my elbow. The last time Mr. Ron Williams called me was December of two thousand twenty-two, saying that we are working on it and we will get everything cleared out. But so far, no, nothing has been done. I also wrote to Mr. Joe Foreman, the county lawyer, to do something about giving them notices to the park owner and the dog owners. And they are not one dog or two dogs, they are ten dogs. And I have to face eighteen dogs on my way to the county, to the city or the county from my residence. And there are too many dogs. There are some rottweilers. There are some pit bulls. There are some, uh, German Shaefer. And there are some, uh, I, I can't call all the names, but now, one, two, and three people are aware of this problem and I wanna know exactly what they're going to do. Because I don't wanna die on US ninety. Dog attacking me. No day, daytime or nighttime or weekdays or weekend, I don't want no dog to come after me. The simple problem is either they put it in a canal or build a fence across the property and make sure they don't dig under the gate. Put a concrete apron six feet wide so they won't dig and come out and attack me. There are other people also complaining about it, but they have not really done any correspondence except me.
Thanks. So if I understand you right, you're having a issue with a dog?
Yes.
Is it some, is, is your neighbor's dog? Is that what it is?
It's not my neighborhood, no. It is a park across the airport called Makati Park. When Mr. Raymond Makati was alive, it never happened because he did not allow any tenant to have dogs.
Okay, sir. David, do you know Mr. Riker?
Oh, yeah. We've known each other for a little bit. Uh, he used to come up to the county offices frequently.
And I got his letter last week.
And his problem is he lives further out ninety. As he's coming down ninety on his bicycle, he's saying there's these aggressive dogs that are approaching him, stopping him, knocking him down, knocking him off his bike. And he's concerned about falling into traffic on ninety, plus he got scraped up because of these aggressive dogs. Uh, the board did pass an aggressive dog ordinance.
Right.
Uh, his issue seems to be that uh, he doesn't feel that the animal control people at the Humane Society are addressing the issue.
No.
Is that correct, Roger? Is that, did I state that correctly, Roger?
Yeah, the animal shelters is useless. They don't do nothing.
So they don't, if they don't know who the dogs are, they should pick the dogs up?
Have you taken, so wait a minute, wait a minute. They're seeing the dog going out and the dogs are there and they're not picking them up because they don't know whose they are?
They, they are aware of it. The animal shelter knows about it. But they keep complaining that they don't belong to.
I wanna ask you something. Has animal control come out and seen the dogs you're talking about?
They have, they have not done it.
They, they have been out.
But, but I had one animal control person tell, or somebody that was close to animal control say something about, well, if nobody claims the dog, if nobody claims the dog, well, if nobody claims the dog, if nobody claims the dog, the dog's going to the dog pound, in my opinion. If they don't claim it, they don't want a liability. So I don't, I don't understand some of the things.
Well, hopefully all of this will change, y'all, though.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to change it.
Uh, Joe told me he, that he got the letter last week, so.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna try to get you some help. We're, we're, we're trying to get something done.
Everybody, everybody.
Some, some kind of letter to the owner of the park and the owner of the dogs. If the owner of the dog says, these are not my dog, the animal shelters should pick the dog up and take it to the shelter.
I, I agree.
A dog running at large should, it should be picked up anyway.
Right.
A dog running at, whether somebody claims it or not, and so that's, that's an enforcement issue. And, and, and we're hearing, these guys are kind of murmuring to each other because they hear this a lot from a lot of constituents.
Where, where is this at? What park are you saying?
Makati.
Where?
Makati Park. Across from the airport.
He's not, he's not, he's not, yeah, by the airport.
Yes.
Okay.
It's another home park across from the airport.
All right, okay, I know what you're talking about. Was it? We're, we're, we're going, we're, we're going, David and Joe's gonna get on.
I've been hearing here we will do something. This is the sixth year, really, sixth year.
All right, thank you, sir.
And the animal control, Ms. Jacob, says, I cannot pick it up because of law, this and that, and, you know.
Okay, all right, we're gonna address it.
Somebody has to pay attention and do something for permanently.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I will see between now and next year what you guys are doing.
Okay. Come on.
I didn't get here and find this a lot of card. I apologize. Um, I was gonna let the pass me down, I guess. I may talk to everybody. Um, so, hi, I'm Nancy Turner. Y'all know me by now, and I live out at Woodborough North. And I, I came tonight to talk specifically to David Kraus. Um, David, you met with Terry Rasmussen and I last year on April fifteenth. The date is easy for me to remember because later that day was my mother's funeral. But you were willing, if you were willing to meet us on a county holiday, which was Good Friday, then I was willing to make it too. It was that important to me. We were there to discuss the probability of bringing city sewer to Woodborough North, the subdivision where I purchased my home. You told us there are grants available through SR, well, Swanee River Water Management District to absorb the cost due to the environmental concern of excessive nitrate load from septic systems. The added benefit, a public sewer would solve the issue of the failing septics in our neighborhood. You said you were going to work together with Paul Dial to write the grant proposal. And you're nodding agreement, okay? And since then, we, when we checked on the progress of the grant, we were told it was either declined or had not, or had missed out for the fall twenty twenty-two grant cycle. But it would be resubmitted for the spring twenty twenty-three cycle. We are three weeks shy of the first anniversary of that meeting and found out in the past two weeks that the grant proposal was never submitted to the Swanee River Water Management Portal, which is required by them. Last Friday, I talked to you on the phone. I was calling to find out if you had submitted the request after your conversation with Terry the week prior. Please recall, you had a conversation with Paul Dial and Terry Rasmussen at the city meeting about a week prior. You advised you had not submitted, but said you would do it that day after you cleared Friday's agenda, last Friday's agenda. Yesterday, I checked with the Swanee River and per Leroy Marshall, the district had not received any grant requests from Columbia County in the portal. Mr. Kraus, you see us here almost every month, and that should trigger a reminder to you that you have not followed through with a promise. You and the county are well aware of the serious issues in the subdivision that are no fault of ours. Tomorrow is Friday again. My question of you is, when can we expect that you, or you and Mr. Dial, will apply for the grant, which will go a long way in fixing the mess that the county and others have gotten us into? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
That is all. Thank you.
And I do apologize. I did tell you last week I would file it last Friday.
Mm-hmm, and you told me a year ago you would file it then.
Well.
Yep, yep.
It's no excuse, but my dog passed away Friday afternoon and I was kind of distracted, so I apologize. I will get it filed.
I'm sorry for your dog.
I have met with Tim Alexander. I've met with Tim Alexander and Mr. Dial. I've met with Mr. Dial. So ultimately, it's going to be, has to be tied to the city because it's the city water and sewer system.
Right.
It's the city utilities.
Right.
I'm just trying to help facilitate that.
Right.
I do apologize to you. It should have been done more expeditiously.
Yeah, it's amazing to me. We, that was the one thing that we were certain was underway, at least that. And there have been improvements made in the subdivision. I know it's, I'm at a, I was having a conversation.
Yeah, you, you, thank.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Come on up, Mary Lee.
Mary Lee Malwitz Gibson, I'm before you today because I'm here representing my business. It's costing me a lot of money and time to deal with this procedure that you're expecting of our business to enter a park that, a, a, a riverfront park that has an FWC boat ramp in it. I'm here to formally object to the certain, to a certain Columbia County Parks and Recreation Management aspect that affects my business directly and its employees every year in order to have access to Columbia County's riverfront Rim Island Park that contains the FWC boat ramp. Run Mount One Thirty-Eight's primary use of Rim Island Park is dropping off and picking up our customers at the boat ramp. Since November two, twenty twenty, Run One Thirty-Eight, my private paddling outfitting business pays Columbia County an annual fee of fifteen hundred dollars to enter the gate at Rim Island, Rim Island Park to utilize the public FWC boat ramp. This boat ramp is paid for and funded by FWC, not Columbia County, by the way, the boat ramp itself. On a daily basis, we do not park in this park for our services. If anything, we remove people from parking inside this park. Any of our customers who decide to park in the park or for whatever their own personal reasons pay the public parking. Every year there is this matter, filing an online application, you have a national athletic company perform background check and credit report. By the way, I'm my employees that enter this one county park to do our outfitting business by dropping off and picking up our customers. And basically, my staff are exactly the same. Really, do I have a turnover in this part of my business? Do you, do your own county employees that work for the Rim Island Park submit to these types of yearly, yearly background checks and credit reports? Or at least as real employees of the county, which your employees are, I am not, this portal is an employee portal, by the way. The reason I ask is this NCIS, okay, it, it's designed for county employees and volunteers for parks and recreational services that work with children. Neither of which I am. If I have children at my business, their parents or their guardians are there with them. I, I mean, it's just ridiculous that I need to have this conversation. I have discussed this county procedure with many people in government work, legal experts, and especially those with recreational knowledge about access to waterways. There's no comparable to this situation. I've been on record objecting to this kind of, I call it harassment, and clearly government overreach from day one. Jan, who's no longer with you, she and I talk often, to me, it's a fascist kind of thing to ask for my private business to submit to a background check and credit report, which doesn't even, there's nothing in here, nothing in your ordinances or even in your application that says I have to submit to a credit report, by the way. I'd love you to have that on the screen so your audience can see what we're subjected to. It's quite alarming. I don't have much time to talk about this, but you really, they need to do a workshop. I talked to the other outfitter today that's also one of the paying members of the commercial round. There's only two of us. They also agree that it's an overreach. So what's happening?
Joe, you want to address that?
Um, my understanding from Kimmy is the other outfitter called her this afternoon to say she does not agree with you, Mary Lee.
Oh, she doesn't agree with me?
She does not.
She thinks it's okay.
No, he called Kimmy to let us know that he does not agree with you.
Okay.
He does not want you to speak for him tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna speak for him. Thank you for clarifying.
Um, Commissioner Ford, I think you got a copy of my response. This is all part of county code. This is a dispute between the Parks Department and, and Run One Thirty-Eight right now. Unless you want to change the code, they're following the code. And so I, I, I'm not, I mean, we're allowed to regulate our parks. It's a, it's a power under one twenty-five. You invoked that power, I think, almost three years ago. And so I, I understand the frustration, I understand, but it's, it's code. Staff has to follow code. So if you want to take a workshop to reconsider the code, that's an option, but as it stands, it is what it is.
And how long has this code been in effect?
I want to say three or four years. We had workshops down in Fort White. There were lots of people that came, and this was when the, all the permitting.
But I mean, we've been doing it for ball, for, for the parks, for coaches and.
Oh, the ballpark stuff forever, so.
That's what I'm saying. So basically, that's the same thing, though, right? Everybody that has, that's a vendor or works in the, in the ballparks or coaches, kids, or works in concession stands.
So the rules that the board adopted, that were proposed by the park director, um, were that any vendors that were asking for a permit, uh, under the Parks ordinance would have to follow the same requirements as vendors who come into the ballfields. And that's exactly what's in the resolution. So, you know, staff is following the directives of the board. If the board wants to change the policy, that's an option that's always available to you, but right now, it's being filed.
I, I have to object to that, too. We're not a vendor. We don't take any money inside the park. It's totally different. You're, you're comparing apples to, to some, some other fruit because this is not the same.
It's a regular commercial use of the park.
I don't take any money inside the park. If you look at vendors, it's.
People paying you to take them to the park?
At my private business, yes, I am.
They are paying you to go to the park. That is a commercial use of the park. You are making money by transporting people into and out of the park. You can't argue that, Mary Lee. It doesn't make any sense.
I don't take money. You're calling me a vendor in the park. I'm not a vendor in the park.
I say you're making regular commercial use of the park.
They do it voluntarily, but they still comply with these rules.
So, so where in here does it say credit report?
Where does it say regular commercial use in the language?
Credit report. I said, where does it say credit report in my application? Where does it say that I am, I, I have to submit to a credit report? It dings their cred, it dings people's credit when they do credit report.
Sheriff, she asked me a question.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna answer it, but she won't.
Yeah, you go.
If you read the restrictions, it says you have to do the same thing they, that they require of vendors at the ballparks. And if that service requires vendors at the ballparks to submit to a credit check, you gotta do the same thing.
But now, I asked, I asked Clint and Kimmy.
And I don't know about this.
I don't either, but they swear they don't do a credit check. That basically, in the report, I looked at one of the reports they get back. Basically, all it says, if you convicted of a felony or to do with child or not convicted, that's all the information it has on it. It don't give it, it don't give any other credit information or anything like that.
So when you say you looked at a report, you mean one that's already been filed?
I'm sorry.
And where, did you look at one that's already been approved? Is that what you looked at, or did you look?
One of the, well, I looked at one that somebody had submitted, basically, one of the coaches and stuff like that, but all it says is, basically, if they, if they pass.
And that's another concern I have, is who is able to access this information? That's another concern I do have. It's like, I, I, there should, there should be some restriction or some sort of way of knowing that nobody's getting, well, the reason I'm saying this is because I have, I have to give my social security numbers, y'all.
I can't let you go on. I have the level I do, so, you know.
I guess I'll have to.
How many years have you been doing this?
This, I think, will be our third, and I object every year. This is the first year I'm finally saying I'm not doing it. So I guess I'll have to get my attorneys involved with the constitutional, because you're bothering mine.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to say one thing. I, I, I've been here since the inception, I shouldn't say the inception. Ron made the statement ten years ago in this room, you know, Rim Island has always been a pain. And it's a great place to be today, but here's the thing. I, I, I one hundred percent support the, the financial, you know, a credit report because living it and breathing it, the taxpayers of Columbia County are supplying a facility for you to operate your commercial business. And anybody else, I'm not getting into debate, I'm just making my point. You talked. But my point is that we don't want vendors coming in that don't pay their bills to local people that they may purchase goods from to, 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 to set out that point. And I'm not saying Mary Lee is right. She's not got a booth set up selling hot dogs and nothing like that. But she is using the facility that the taxpayers of State of Florida have invested millions upon millions upon millions of dollars into Rim Island to make it the facility. Is it perfect? No. Is it a hell of a lot better than it was eight years ago? You got darn right of this. And it's, uh, so, you know, you don't want to get into the debate with me. You get your lawyer, you do what you said, but, uh, me and you ain't talking right now. But I just wanted the public to hear that because that's a fact.
Fifteen hundred dollars I pay.
Fifteen hundred dollars, that's a cheap price to pay. That's a cheap price to pay for what you charge to send people down the river in a canoe.
And sales taxes.
Yeah. Everybody wants all the profits, but nobody wants to share. I get it. Yes, sir. Come on up.
I got background check yesterday. For guardian light that I'm, thank God that I'm gonna get involved with. Um, my name is Clermont Ashby. Monty, everybody knows Monty. I've been here a little bit over a year from Orlando. Um, been involved with Mayor Dyer and Chief Demings and those guys in Orlando and, um, working in the community and volunteering my time, even when I was working. I'm retired from the Homeland Security now, a year, November was, I retired. But, um, when we talk about the Richardson Center, I do feel that, I'm amazed that the people that I know in the community, um, surrounding the center, there's a lot of things that they don't even know about. And that first day I come here, I know that there's, I can get, um, 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 free, um, um, I could get free copies and, and I can go on the internet and, and do things free instead of going to, um, Office Depot. The community don't know this. So I need help because I want to get the community, you know, I go to those doors and, and I tell the parents to go, go to PTA, you know, and, and see what's going on in your schools and with your children. They don't know how to do it here. They don't know how to do it. I need help. Um, I hear the voices that you would not like that center to close up. I appreciate it. And of course not. And I know a lot of it stems on the people. That's what I did in the streets, going knocking on doors, but I don't have no help. I don't have no help. And I've just been praying about it for the commu, the, the county, city, and give us some ideas. I, I have a group of, I know of a group of people who have some ideas to bring some resources there to that center as far as getting baseball teams and various things going on in there. So I don't see it. And but it takes the community, but I, we need hel, I need help. We, we, we need help. Uh, and, and, and ideas. I mean, I get, I have some people who got some great ideas. So there's some things, you know, I'm hearing about insurance and this, this kind of things, you know, working in the center there. But if I can get, we can get some ideas at a, at a forum where we have a workshop where we can come together, city, co, co, and county, and for the sake of the kids, for the sake of the kids, you know, I saw, I'm just, I don't know, I feel. I just feel the hope for the kids. That's what I do. I'm in the woods, in the tents, with kids, people in the tents. I just want to help somebody. So whatever, I mean, whatever we can do to have a workshop, so we can get all our ideas together, please.
Well, when we have that workshop, I, I would love for you to be there because you, you've got the passion to do the right thing. And that's exactly what I said a year ago in here. It's time that the parents and the fathers and the mothers of all these children, we step up. And that, it, it's, it's not government's responsibility to fix a kid. It starts at the house. And, and, and I heard you speak before, and you speak from the heart, and, and, and I apologize because, but we need to speak, we, the community, not only at Richardson, but the community of Columbia County needs to support the efforts of what you're saying out there. I agree with you one hundred percent. And, and you have, look, the county's doing everything they can. The city has city councilmen that are there living in that area, I believe. They have to live pretty close to that area because they're in the district there. So those would be the first ones I would reach out to, the, the, the city councilman, because they, you know, they, and us too, but we're, we're doing everything we can, you know. And, and.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Phil Mobley. Um, I just want.
My name is Phil Mobley. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your support of the, of the Richardson Center and all the work that goes on there. I will say that there are a lot more work that is in, in the groundwork of being done to help work with the community, to actually, we do, we really do not believe that it is government's place to raise our children. We don't believe it's government's place to solve all of the community problems. We are working on that. We will be coming to you, asking you to help us with some efforts that we're, we're about to undertake to help that. But the, the framework that we're having at the center is really to be able to help the community and look at what community problems are. Anytime there's a problem, one of the things that we did with North Star when we started is to say, what are the community problems? We went to the community and asked the community what the problems are. And as problems continue to braise ahead, I'm one person that believes that you have to go to a root cause of that problem and solve it based on root cause. We're dealing with, we're starting to work with the ministers and, and the faith leaders to work with some of the causes with the crime in the community. But it is because we have gotten where we are. It is not a quick fix, but it takes the entire community. And so we want to thank you for your support. And we thank support for everybody that believes in the center. Again, the center is not just for kids in that community that are hearing. The center is for all kids. We work with all families from all over Columbia County, and, and we want to make sure that we don't just label it to kids in that community. Because we want to, we're here to help every child in Columbia County. We thank you and we appreciate you, and we ask you to continue to support us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on.
Good evening. My name is Clarita Holton. I'm a longtime resident here in Columbia County. I'm here today to voice my concerns about basketball goals that are facing roadways on many streets where children and adults play basketball throughout the county. I personally think these goals should be in landowners' yards. When I was growing up, basketball goals, we had ours in our backyard, but now they're in roadways everywhere. I think most people see them everywhere. First, I believe it's unsafe for children and adults to play in the roads. I think it's only a matter of time before someone's injured. That's number one. In addition, the vehicles often have to literally stop to wait for children to move out of the way. For me, personally, it affects visitors who come to my property because the basketball goals are right in my driveway, actually. And so people have to wait or avoid them because if they park in front of my house, they run the risk of balls hitting their cars or children running into their vehicles. Next, personally, like I said, the goal that I'm referencing to in my community is blocking the entrance to my driveway. When I enter or exit, I have to pause and await for children and adults to move. In addition, due to the positioning, it's unavoidable for kids or adults to avoid running in my road. They, I mean, in my yard. They run in my yard at least 15, 20 times a day. And to no avail, I've spoken to the parents. I've spoken to the commissioner, county manager, and I think the commissioner and county manager, they, I think they're doing as much as they possibly can. I'm not sure if anyone has any answers. I've spoken to code enforcement, sheriff department. They asked them to move, and then they're back out there again. So this has happened approximately over four or five years. And I think that I should fully be able to enjoy my property that I own. So I'm here today to appeal to the board to consider if they, if goals cannot be banned from being in roadways, to consider creating an ordinance that will protect property owners from sharing the responsibility of a goal or play area where they run into the yard. My yard is like an extension of a basketball court. So if something like that could be done where goals would not be erected within 15 or 20 feet of a person's entrance to their driveway, that would definitely benefit me.
Lieutenant Attorney.
Yes, sir.
In her case, it's a little different than, than most of them where there is a goal on the road itself. Across from her driveway, there's a little paved section, and the goal is sitting on that posed paved section instead of on the right of way itself. Every time I was going around there, the goal is not on the county right of way. It's on the private right of way, but they use the road as part of the basketball court. So I cannot have, I can't do anything about it being on private property. I can do something about it if it's on the, on the county, on, on county road. But it's not on the road. It's on a paved, little paved area off of the road.
Yeah, and, and, you know, our current LDRs and code prohibits blocking right of ways, right? Can't leave abandoned things, their junk. And a basketball goal that impedes traffic will be a problem. What you're describing, Commissioner, is more regulating individual conduct. And you can regulate individual conduct on your streets and roads. It's just a policy decision that you'd have to make if you don't want children playing in the street. We'll need to adopt an ordinance that says that. But again, it'll have to be, the county road system's fairly extensive. Obviously, there's some places we wouldn't have kids play at all. There's lots of places, dead ends and things like that. So you just have to kind of maybe evaluate, maybe look at what some of the jurisdictions are doing. You do have that police power. It would be a policy question whether or not you want to exercise it, how you want to exercise it.
It was one on down the street to the south of this one, which I had them quit using that one because it was on the road, but this one is not on the road.
Yeah, and any of the commissioners, if you have a goal that's impairing traffic in any way, if it's out on the paved surface, code enforcement can come cite that immediately and get that moved. But when it's on private property and you don't directly observe the conduct, it becomes more difficult. We do have the citation system now, so that might be a citable offense. You know, where you come to the house and the kids are playing out there, you could go to the, the landowner and you can't have your kids out in the street. You know, here's a citation. You do have the police power to do it. It would just be a policy decision that you'd have to make about whether or not you want to go forward.
Thank, thank you for bringing that up, Keith.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on.
Tammy Magstead, Lake City. I'm on the Richardson Community Center Board, and I was just going to give, we have appreciated the things you have done for the center, but I was just going to give you a little update on something because Mr. Kraus and I have spent hours working on sorting out what we've been talking about, the separation between recreation and the community center. But I just wanted to give you a little update because we started March 1st, and that was through the Recreation Department, community, or the County Recreation Department started a basketball program that was the 1st of March, had 14 teams, probably nine, eight to nine boys per team, ages five through 13. Now, this is through the county Recreation Department. You had that many people. You had, those teams are playing seven games a week. We're on our fourth time this coming Saturday. We still will go through the 1st of April. We've had over 300 people attending. And then when Mr. Kraus and I have met to get it sorted between the board and the Recreation Department, we had clear factors for cornhole, for pickleball, for the basketball program. And then we were getting ready to start the summer camp program. But this is through the county. And we had it sorted down to, like, for example, as these children signed up for basketball, they had to pay $70 per child. That went to the county. And I'm just giving you some facts supporting you. Like, your Recreation Department has this great basketball program that's been going on all of March. We've got a summer program ready to kick in, but what's holding us up is this fight between the county and the city. And I'm not saying this against you. I mean, I support you saying, look what the county's doing. We have a 990 form filled out. We have QuickBooks that we have gone all through the year. We've reported, given it to Mr. Kraus's office. You can ask him. And I just want you to know, we have supported you and we're for you. And so for you to say, yes, we'll take this deed, I hope the city does it. Because this basketball program that's been going on this month, when you see five-year-olds to 15-year-old boys that have a purpose, that's the County Recreation Department.
And, and I would tell you, be at that city meeting and tell the same story.
I agree. Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
I'm not sure this is the correct time. We're on the roster, number 19, for this special family lot permit for the Bird family. And we noticed a big discrepancy.
It was only, it was only considered.
You were approved.
I know, but that's the problem. We were giving our son 2.5 acres, not 13.39 acres.
Was that a missed print?
I hope so.
Just settle it back to you tomorrow.
He wouldn't want to pay our taxes. So I just, can you amend it and the 2.5 and approve that tonight?
Did you say it was item 19, ma'am?
Yes, yes, sir.
If any commissioner make a motion to reconsideration of item 19 on the consent agenda, you can call that back up and correct it.
I move to reconsider item 19 on the agenda.
Second. If that was supposed to be, how many acres?
We're giving him 2.5 acres. I have the new description here. It just somehow got mixed up.
It's okay. Thank you for letting us know.
So 2.5 acres to Michael S. Bird, and we'll keep the 13, or whatever's left.
You fixed to have to move out.
Can you give a copy of that description to the attorney?
Yes, I sure can.
So we just vote to do it, make it, change that to two and a half acres.
Call a quick vote on the motion to reconsider. All those in favor.
Got a second?
Yep.
Got a motion and a second on the motion to reconsider item 19 on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, a motion to adopt with the change to 2.5 acres.
Make the motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Come on.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sir? Motion's carried.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing out our attention.
How are you keeping us straight?
All right, anybody else? Come on up. Oh, you're there. Anybody else want to speak to them?
Could I ask one more question, please? But the only question that I asked, I didn't get an answer. May I re-
If you'll get with David, he'll, he'll give you everything he needs after the meeting.
Are you?
Can you get with David after the meeting and he can tell you.
Okay.
Not seeing anybody else, we'll move on. Commissioners, y'all got anything?
Got it.
Daff, y'all got anything?
I got, I got, don't run off.
Okay.
You said no?
No, I've got a little bit of something on, okay.
Go ahead.
Here, a few weeks ago, I had asked about some flashing stoplights at a couple of intersections that have people that got killed. And I would like to see this happen as a safety program. And I was talking to David, and if, and if I'm not wrong, David said that there was some money in the budget that the, was not going to go to the swimming pool. Am I right, David?
What's going on is we had promised up to $60,000 to the pool for the heating system.
Right.
School system said the sole source they used to do this wasn't valid, so they're going to have to go out and bid. So that money will not be expended in this fiscal.
Yeah, they pulled that from TDC also.
Yeah, okay. If I need to make this an emotion, I'll make it an emotion.
Well, I don't think you can do it tonight, but we can put it on next, on the next agenda.
Okay. I will, I mean, I would like to see it done.
Can you, can you put that on the agenda, David, for next week? Dedicate the locations.
Okay, three times last week.
Anybody else, sir?
Oh, I thought you said.
All right. Nate, Kevin, you got anything? David?
Yes, sir.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sure.